It's hard to interpret their handwriting. Luckily, we had the manager there and the sheriff there who are very familiar with the staff members. We were sort of brainstorming, how can we find a resolution to this? We were previously marking up every shift change, but we were told we don't need to. We can mark up in one allotment, which would be a larger span of coverage without having to interpret the data. Additionally, we'd like to let the board supervisors know that as of Friday, we started marking up all units and I am responding. There was an issue with that before with some of our members not having unlimited data, but we've had a member step up and say that he will actually enter every person in for Another thing that was mentioned at the last board supervisor meeting was in regards to training. It's stated that we do not participate in countywide training, which is incorrect. The county has provided four trainings this year, and our members have attended three out of the four. The fourth one, we were unable to attend because of short notice and work schedules because the training was during a week. There was a comment made in regards to the image trend system. Yes, we are not putting into image trend. Image trend only gives you call report information with P A I. We have a seek to legal counsel and it is against HIPAA code for us to do that as our own entity. We are working with legal counsel to get a formal document to you to support that. We have tried and continue to try to work with the county to provide coverage. Recently, when the county needed a unit, we sent one of our units. We did not have a full unit marked up. We had a driver and an ambulance available on the scene. Station four did not have an ambulance available, but had four members available. But unfortunately, we were unable to consider a full unit because we only had a driver. So another county was called in. However, recently, on May 15th, Station four marked up a unit that only had one member, which was a provider and no driver, and additional transport services were requested. I mention this because we're trying to work with the county, but there seems to be a discrepancy against how the rules work for one station versus another station. We will continue to participate in chief's meeting and work towards bridging this communication gap. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Seeing no one else come forward, I will close this public comment period. Gentlemen, excluding item two, has everyone reviewed consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion. We adopt the consent agenda revising seven A to strike the equal twelfth minutes because there are some discrepancies. I think we need to resolve that. So items, small Roman numeral three, will become Roman numeral two.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? Tori.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Amar?
Aye.
Mr. Stalsky?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
Next item is Alta Belle perseverance, or perseverance of which is Belle family Matt Arquay. Come on to the panel.
Mr. Chairman, is it all right?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Good evening. Ladies and members of the board supervisors. Perseverance, a noun, steady persistence in a course of action, a purpose, a state, et cetera, especially in spite of difficulties, obstacles, or discouragement. We chose the name of this particular award to victims of crime for two reasons. Number one, perseverance. In this particular case that involved acts of horrible violence in December of 2015, it did not end until the perpetrator of that violence was sentenced to life in prison in March of 2018, over two years. Throughout that entire period, the Belle family and their friends waited patiently with grace and nice towards us because the criminal justice system can be difficult. They waited through motions, evaluations, trial continuances, new attorneys, breakdowns in the evidence. In the darkest part of the entire over two years, at least for myself, was about three weeks before one of the scheduled trials, and one of our key witnesses provided key evidence was changing their testimony. And as prosecutor, I was done. We met with the Belle family, we explained to them what was happening. Again, they were very patient, but they told us to persevere. They told us to stick with it. It made me a better prosecutor, a better person. The second reason we chose the name of this award was Alta Danielle Bell, whose life was cut short by these evil acts, but who lives on in the many, many people who knew her and cared for her. We had one of the lengthiest sentencing hearings I've been involved in where folks wrote letters and testified to who Alta was and is in their hearts. She was loved dearly as a daughter, a sister, an aunt, and a best friend. She was a daughter to Mr. and Mrs. Belle, who raised her to be an incredible young woman. She lived across the road from them. She saw them nearly every day. Every day she would go and before she went to work, take a picture with her father, a selfie with her father, and post it on social media every day. She was inseparable from her parents, but especially her father. She was a sister to her twin and her brothers, but also to numerous other friends who called her sister. Not a day went by that she did not talk with her friends and her family and communicate with them and be a part of their life. Alta worked for the community services board, and she was committed to her clients. In fact, while she was in the hospital after these events, she insisted, she told her sister that she wanted to get going, get back to work, get back to her clients. I never knew Alta Bell, but everybody talked about her as a person with infectious happiness, energy, generosity. She made, one person testified at the sentencing, she made others forget their troubles and worries and delighted in making others happy. Which leads me to another definition of perseverance. This one from theology. Continuance in a state of grace to the end, leading to eternal salvation. Mr. and Mrs. Belle family, if you could come up, please.
This is the 2019 Alta Danielle Perseverance Award. Our office will give this award out every year going forward. You get the first.
Good evening. I'm Acton Bell, Alta's twin sister. I've been the designated spokesperson. The events of Alta's passing were tragic, and we many times felt we were living in a Lifetime movie. And I spent the last seven days, she was in the hospital with her, and it was the timing of God that I was on winter break from teaching. And we fought as we always did, and we loved each other as we always did. And I was in the room when she passed, and it was just having faith to know that it was her time. And they did everything they could to try to revive her. And her heart, her heart stopped. She experienced a tragic event, and I'm grateful for the 33 years we had. The process of the trial was enduring, and the first thing that Attorney Kite told us was that we're going to do this slow and right, rather than fast and wrong. And when he said that, he meant it. And we prayed, and we knew that the portion of her dying was ending, and we had to move on with fighting for justice. So we are grateful to Attorney Kite, and Joni, and Robin, and CND for their support and guidance, especially when we had questions that they couldn't answer. We're grateful to the West Point Police Department, strong and mighty in its small fleet, and Chief transitioning from Chief of Police and Investigator Taylor. And we had to realize that what we see on TV is not reality, and that they were working behind the scenes as well as they could, and they were persevering for us. And we had to trust that we couldn't have the answers to those questions that we could eventually understand as best we could. So we're grateful again for them having patience with us, for them fighting for justice for Alta. And one of the pieces of evidence that we had no clue about was Investigator Taylor coming to the hospital the day she was admitted and speaking with her and asking questions. Because everything she told us, we helped put the pieces of the timeline together. It was all hearsay. She knew what had happened, she knew who had attacked her, and we couldn't use that as evidence. And it was frustrating because she said herself exactly who had done it. But the video that he had allowed her to speak, her victims, her, the accusers' name, which for us was peace, because we knew it was there, and we knew they had done what they said they would do. So we're grateful to the citizens of King William County, the members of the jury, and the judge as well. So thank you for your support, prayers, guidance, well wishes. We felt it all through the entire process, and it gives us strength to carry on, and we are honored to be the first recipients of the Alta Danielle Bell Perseverance Award. Thank you.
The next item is A B recognition of Eugene Rivera and Ms. Mitchell, Director of King William Social Services. Come forward, please.
Got a paper topic. So Resolution 1927, resolution in recognition of Eugene Rivera for outstanding public service award. Whereas Eugene Rivera has been a faithful and dedicated volunteer in the county of King William throughout his 33 years of residency, and whereas Eugene Rivera has served as the parent representative on the King William Community Policy and Management Team for 13 years, providing valuable input for children and families being served by the Children's Services Act in King William County. And whereas Eugene Rivera has served on the King William Board of Supervisors, the Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission, and the King William Electoral Board, and whereas Eugene Rivera has been involved with the Matapani and Palmonki River Association since its inception in 1992 to protect their natural resources and beauty, and has served as the president of this organization and actively coordinates river cleanups. And whereas Eugene Rivera and his family have adopted a section of Zohar State Forest located in King William County along the Matapani River through the Adopt the Spot Campaign, and whereas Eugene Rivera has served on Congressman Rob Whitman's Environmental Environment Committee for eight years, and whereas Eugene Rivera has been involved with the King William Little League Program for 20 years, is a member of St. Paul's Episcopal Church in Miller's Tavern, and has served on the vestry as both senior and junior warden. Now therefore be it resolved that the King William County Board of Supervisors expresses its appreciation to Eugene Rivera for his valuable contributions to the well-being of the citizens of King William County, and recognizes him as the recipient of the Outstanding Public Service Award from the Virginia League of Social Services Executives. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution expressing the sense of this board of supervisors on this matter shall be conveyed to Mr. Rivera and shall be spread upon meeting minutes of said board supervisors.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Mitchell.
Yeah, but Mike, we also forgot to mention Eugene's numerous years of service to the King William County Public Schools in the resolution.
And Recreation Commission.
And Recreation. There's other things outside of this.
We only want you to pay for it.
Yeah, this is a decision. We're going to issue a paper. So thank you.
I'll make as long as I could.
Ms. Mitchell has a presentation.
Yes. As Director of a local social services agency, I have the honor to be a member of the Virginia League of Social Services Executives. And every year, we nominate individuals who are demonstrative of over and above public service. And my first thought is Eugene. He's been, for me, a steadfast parent representative on the Community Policy and Management Team for the Children's Services Act, the CSA. Most people know the CSA. Rarely does he miss a meeting. Every meeting, he has good questions, he makes good comments. His concern for the children and families of this county is just phenomenal. His knowledge is just unbelievable. He's done such a wonderful job. Every meeting, I thank him for being on that team. And even Dr. White, anybody, he's on that team. I thank him every meeting for being so consistent with his attendance and with his participation. So this award was given to him by Virginia League of Social Services at our spring conference. It was statewide competition, and he was selected to be the winner. And the award says, "Making the Difference, awarding to Eugene Rivera for your dedicated years of outstanding service and commitment. Thank you for everything you have done. You truly make a difference. 2019 Virginia League of Social Services Executives." Thank you.
Thank you.
I will tell you, I have, I always believed that you don't just live in a community, you work for the community, and I've always tried to do that here in King William, and I've done that from day one that I've lived in King William. The greatest award of gratitude that I've gotten is working with Ann Mitchell and Ann Porter at the CSA and at CPMT, knowing that what we do at CPMT is providing children who are in need of services and giving them those services that they need. I'm umpire Little League, I know you can't play a ballgame without an umpire. I mean, that's fun, you know? I clean the rivers, you know? I've been on the planning commission, I've been on the board of supervisors, I'm on recommission, I'm on the electoral board. Those things count, but what I do at CPMT as a parent rep really gives me great reward knowing that we are providing kids, children, who are in need of services their services. And Ms. Tassinari, Mr. Stuck, and members of the board, you are so fortunate to have Ann Porter and Ann Mitchell as your social services representatives. They do just a wonderful job every month, month after month, and you are very fortunate to have them. I thank you for these, and I appreciate and I always will continue to work for the community. Thank you.
The next item we have is nine A, update on the Hamilton Homes Middle School Project. David O. White, King William County Public School Superintendent. I think you have the floor for a few items here.
Yes, sir. Chairman Hodges, members of the board, Ms. Tassinari. I bring before you Mr. Gordon Frenzick, who has been accompanying me on several occasions to give update on the Hamilton Homes Middle School Project, and he is once again sharing some information regarding the roof project and possibly some of the information on the completion of the project. Put in some words for that as well.
We did have a bid on the roof recovered project. Unfortunately, we only had one bidder, and as you might expect, it was very, very, very hot. I spoke with the representative for Roof Consulting Services. They handle almost all of the state's surveying and inspections of roofs. I also spoke with the roofing manufacturer, who was pretty much one bidding to the various contractors. We had seven people show up for a pre-bid. Roof manufacturer said that he had four people who were actively pursuing bidding, and yet they were all surprised we only had one bid. But it was primarily because of the bid environment. There's a lot of roof work out there this year, and a lot of these contractors had already loaded up. Their recommendation was to just make some critical repairs that we expect to be about $10,000 that would stop the present leaks, and then just rebid it in the fall. And we planned to bid it with the worst portions of the roof as the base bid, and then have other sections as add alternates so we can at least ensure to get those worst sections done. What we are seeking to do is the monies that were allocated for the roof project and the other money's allocated towards Hamilton Homes to be used to complete that project, and then that would give the funds, we expect to complete, most of it's at the end of June. There's a small area that's got to move and get completed. That will be completed a couple of weeks later. And then rebid in the fall as they suggested. And this is to inform you and just let you know if you have any concerns or questions.
So you said you expect the project currently to end, or finish in the end of June? Is that right?
That's correct.
And so what you're wanting is the money to come over and sit at the school for five or so months until the project is rebid? Is that what you're asking, for this money to be transferred or authorized over?
Essentially, that's correct.
What's the difference whether it sits at the school versus sits at the county?
That doesn't matter. You all are in control of the money with the bond, you know, and you all have already appropriated the funds for the project, so where it sits really doesn't matter to us. We just want to, you know, consider the use of it moving forward.
And with putting this off, it's not adding to our damage that we're going to uncover later? They're going to patch it to the?
Yes, sir. Make the required patchwork for the most damaged areas, and then, you know, hopefully that'll hold us over until we can address it in the subsequent year.
When we had the survey done of the roof by RCS, they have photographs and layout. There are areas in the roof, particularly the south side, see with any membrane roof, it is the sun that deteriorates the membrane. So on a lot of those areas, you've got places where the membrane is actually torn away from the wall, and it creates a gap that it just rains in, and other places where there's holes, that's what we want to take care of. With the present contractor, so that we can get it done right away, is a change to him.
Anything?
Go ahead.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I don't see going with the bid that we got on the roof, so this is kind of the only way forward with that at this point. And then we hope, and I hope we really drive that process when it comes back around to try to get some, get some participation, some bids in there, because it needs to get done. But, you know, so far, everything's been moving along okay. Get this little hiccup here, so if we can get through this, we'll be, we'll be doing all right.
Can I get clarification on that? You expect if, with the existing contractor move forward? I mean, we're rebidding the project, this contract, the contractor that's out there now ends in the end of June, or what's the substantial completion date for a project?
The substantial completion date is, I believe, at the present July, the, I can't remember, I think it's July the 12th.
And he's talking about the needed, the $10,000 to do the most needed repairs to the roof, not the, not holding on to that contractor for the roof repair, the general roof repair after this project?
So this would be essentially a fourth change order or additive, just specific for $10,000 for the roof?
That would be an extra to the present contractor. The roofer out there was going to be one of the bidders on this roofing cover project.
The present contractor, okay. The one that's doing the renovations?
He's a subcontractor to the general. But he's familiar with it, and he can certainly take care of it effectively.
So the $10,000 is basically an interim to address the worst areas?
To stop the water from getting into the roof.
Which is continuing to happen right now, is what you're telling us?
Correct, yes. Every time it rains.
On our new building? That's where my thoughts are going.
It's mostly the existing part. A lot of the new areas have new roof. But it's that 60,000 square feet of existing.
Steve?
Yeah, I mean, again, I don't see moving forward with that bid, so we know the work needs to get done, but we'll try again in the fall. In the meantime, yeah, we need to address holes. Holes aren't good.
And I guess I'm to remain up here regarding the resolution?
Yes, sir. Resolution 19-dash?
Let me ask you to move that microphone closer to your ex. Thank you.
Yes.
Resolution 19-28, adopting King William County School Board Capital Reserve Fund Policy.
Okay. And I want to thank Ms. Tassinari for her help with helping us to adopt, or excuse me, to create and develop the resolution. Resolution, uses of school year in fund balance between the Board of Supervisors and the School Board. Whereas the School Board for King William County recognizes that a need exists to adopt a formal long-range plan with the Board of Supervisors that addresses the uses of school year in fund balances, and whereas the School Board believes that these balances are achieved as a result of sound and conservative management throughout each year of the funds that are appropriated to the school division, and whereas the Board also believes that these fund balances should be reserved for the school division needs and re-appropriated for certain capital projects and equipment, and whereas the School Capital Reserve Fund is the mechanism for reserving school fund balance. is the mechanism for reserving school fund balances for school needs, and whereas the procedures for this School Capital Reserve Fund would include a journal entry after year, and whereby fund balances were moved into the fund, and the usage of such funds would be based upon School Board request and Board of Supervisor appropriation. Now for, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors has approved a School Capital Reserve Fund and established procedures whereby after each year end, any school fund balances are moved to the School Capital Reserve Fund, and then may be subsequently appropriated for certain school needs to, in response to specific School Board requests. And I'm sorry, I'm reading off my phone, a little small print.
So, Mr. Chairman, essentially what we're doing here is we're taking any year-end overages, and we're going to dedicate them to a capital fund, as opposed to some more general, open type of reserve fund, it's going to be dedicated to capital.
Correct. At the year end, the operational budget, the funds that are left are swept into the school reserve.
Yes.
Which is basically a second general fund under the school's authority, but cannot be expended without the Board of Supervisors appropriating it. This way, because there have been so many, so much deferred maintenance identified, Dr. White and I felt that this would be a good avenue to make sure that all of those swept funds would then be pushed to the capital fund and utilized strictly for capital needs.
And this is not only Dr. White's recommendation, your resolution?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, what are we doing now? Directing maybe towards Ms. Tassaneri? I mean, we're just, we're keeping this money here now, and then we have to authorize or appropriate it later on, is that correct? There is no school fund now, right, balance now?
There is a school fund balance, yes. There, there is the School Reserve Fund, which is Fund 190, and at the end of every year, any operational funds that were not expended or swept into that fund, what we're trying to do is streamline it, and instead of leaving some in there and allocating some to capital, all of it will go towards capital to address the capital needs of the schools, so that there's no ambiguity in the way that it's handled.
Mr. Chairman, remember currently, again, split levy here, any surplus that shows up on the school fund side has to remain for school use only. So that's why there is a separate School Reserve Fund, you know, otherwise it would just be Reserve Fund generally. So really what we're doing here is just designating that fund as a capital fund, as opposed to a general fund.
And we have many maintenance needs that we need to take care of.
And this really just codifies what we're looking to do, and again, streamlines it, just as Mrs. Tassaneri mentioned.
So this resolution will become effective July 1, or is it going to be retroactive?
It will become effective today with the expectation that when we close out fiscal year 19, that those funds will then flow underneath this resolution.
And when do we anticipate closing out FY19?
FY19 ends June 30, and we usually, it usually takes us till the end of October to close out the fiscal year because of the federal grants that the school receives.
So can we direct, under this resolution, that the $10,000 for the roof repair be associated with that? Because that is a maintenance issue.
My concern would be, is the appropriation, or excuse me, the expenditure of that money in this fiscal year. Because that's a need that is, has been identified now, and the repair would be done in FY19. So I'm not sure if we could expend that fund in FY20, and...
The $10,000 that he is talking about, that's from the bond sale, the proceeds that we have been using for the renovation and upgrade. Funds stay at the state treasurer until we invoice and request reimbursement.
But why take money out of the bond proceeds, which will go to...
Because they're going to, that's what you're saying in that statement.
That's the impression I got from the previous presentation, that...
That's not going to happen in any roof that I've ever done.
And again, a roof is a maintenance, so why can't we use, why can't we apply the $10,000 towards that, if the money's already there now? I mean, if we have FY18 money, what was, was FY18 money all used?
It was allocated towards the next fiscal year's budget for whatever was requested that the Board then approved. So I don't really even remember what the school reserve, some of it was put into capital. I'm not sure what the balance is in there.
I'm not sure, right offhand.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, the question, I think the more pertinent answer there for Mr. Earhart's question is that, the way I would understand it, is that that money is essentially already appropriated.
Do we have, Mr. Counselor Stuck, do we have any leeway or authority to direct how that money is used?
If you've appropriated money to the school system for the project and they're using that money for the roof, no, sir. That's, you've done your part, which is appropriated. I mean, if you felt like, you know, you, this money that Ms. Tassaneri is talking about, if in the next year, you had some surplus from this year's budget, and you, then you can direct it to whatever capital project you want. If you wanted to direct it then to more roof work, you could, or whatever else you want, but, but you will control the appropriation, you know, going forward in the next year.
But this is for FY19, which we're currently in?
Well, you're not, correct, but the money won't, still, this funds will flow into, we're talking operational money, correct, not capital. So this is the operational budget, you know, the day-to-day operation of the schools. It's not part of the same pot as the capital money that built, building the school addition. So once the, once the operational money is over with, because the year is over with, then I think the proposal is to take that operational money and put it into the capital fund, to be spent in the future for capital, because the Board could, in theory, if you, you know, you could take that money and apply it to next year's operating budget, but then you don't get the capital work done, and you're also probably improperly deflating the cost of operating the schools because you're using prior year money to do it, and so you could get yourself into a situation where you may have to have a sudden tax increase that you weren't anticipating because of that.
Okay.
Right, and so again, Mr. Chairman, the fact that we are still in FY19 is my point, is that that money has already been appropriated in FY19 for this project? Yeah, okay. That's why I was, it wasn't, it wasn't clicking for me that we could, that we could do that, because we've already made the appropriation, so you would have to, I don't know that you could unwind that and then re-insert this, it wouldn't, I don't think you...
What would you change? Mr. Greenwood?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make a point that it also, even though this would, if we pass it, move over into next year's capital, but we still would have to appropriate if the Board would, they don't just get to use it for whatever they want. We still would come to us, ask us, like you said, all to the roof, new roofing plan, or some to the roofing plan, some to the, something else, but we would still be in total control of where it goes.
Okay. So is that a motion?
Motion, sure.
All right, I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Ruskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
And you're up on...
One more.
Item ten A, update on ABM Performance Contract for King William County Public Schools.
And this ties into our capital maintenance situation, so I'd ask that ABM, Nathan, and this team come up and present on our current facilities and the plan moving forward.
I think it's an on-off. Is that, what is that, Ms. Tassaneri? I don't think we, we don't, we don't have a remote to move forward.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ms. Tassaneri. We're excited to present our final project review for the upcoming performance contract with, with King William County Public Schools. We're excited to share the results of where we're at to this point. I'd like to leave you with three key takeaways. The first being that we know King William County Public Schools' critical needs. We've spent time in the facilities since July of last year, so upcoming a year. We understand there are challenges on being able to fund and make these upgrades. And lastly, that the ABM program will be a contributor to King William County Public Schools' success. So we've done our, what we call our investment grade audit, going to share those results with you, what we've developed high level on the technical solutions, and then what the final financial outcomes and the ongoing guarantee that we're going to be providing the school division. So the first step during this investment grade audit, where we're doing our detailed engineering and solutions, is we do what we call our capital volatility analysis. In this case, on this pie chart, we're looking at mechanical equipment. Wanted to show a snapshot on what kind of volatility you have within the school divisions. Seventy-five percent of the mechanical equipment in the school division is in fair to very poor condition, and that's illustrated on the pie chart. The yellow is a C, the orange is a D, and the red is an F. So we graded it, just as, as we do the students, and over 58% of that is at a D and F. So what we can tell you with certainty, not that it's going to fail tomorrow, there are systems that are down, but that you've got a lot of capital risk out there that's going to have to be addressed. It's critical, and even during this investment grade audit, we had, when we were working with the schools, there were units going down, the high school, you know, another one at Cool Spring Elementary, so there were challenges as we went through the audit.
When you did that, Mr. Chairman...
Yes, sir.
When you did that evaluation, did you give us a priority of which ones need to be done, which ones are most critical, down to the one that maybe could squeak?
Yes, we did. We actually, we graded each and every single asset, and we co-authored that with the school division and the team to address what could be done within this project. We evaluated more needs than what could be addressed in this first phase, so we prioritize those based on, on the financials, the savings, and the capital, so we did, did prioritize those in that manner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And the big benefit is this also provides a financial plan and solution influence over the long term. So we really look at it as what could we do in this first phase of a project, but then also a strategic financial plan and solution influence for five, 10, 15 years down the road as well. A big, a big thing that we found during the investment grade audit as well is that there was not up-to-code conditions as far as bringing outside air at the high school and at the Quentin Elementary School. So it was not up-to-code on the amount of outside air that came in, and we know, we've got several studies and reports that improving the indoor air quality and improving the quality of lighting does improve student achievement. And so that was one big benefit as, to implement this project, is we are going to get it up to code, and we are going to provide the most conducive learning environment possible.
Mr. Chairman, I...
Sir.
In this, were you, it's becoming a major issue nowadays about transmissions of infectious agents in buildings. How, what is your proposal to, to minimize that exposure?
Yep, that's a great question. I'll actually defer all that to Stephen Nease, he's our mechanical engineer, project developer, and he's...
I understand, my interpretation would be it's impossible to do so, but at least you can take some proactive steps to minimize that exposure.
Right, sir.
So, yeah, ashtray dictates how much outside air you should bring in, there's two different methods, and the whole goal is to do exactly that. It refers in the indoor contaminants, pollutants. One method is by bringing in a lot of outside air. Another method is a technology we're going to be using on this cold plasma ionization, which actually cleans up that indoor air environment, so you can bring in less outside air. So there's two approved methods for ashtray, who writes the industry standards for outside air, and how it relates to indoor air pollution.
These infectious agents, they prefer hot and humid kind of environment. So fixing the lot of controls and upgrading all the equipment and maintaining the required temperature and humidity levels inside the spaces goes a long way in, in, again, you can't completely neutralize that, but you can control it.
Is there, in your plans, are there any, like a yearly or every six months, cleaning the, the actual ducts of the HVAC, or is that necessary?
So ashtray recommends every 30 years that you clean the ducts out?
Yes. That's a good answer right there.
Yes, but cold plasma technology will also be in that air stream, so we will also do that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Would you repeat one more time? Where are the ventilation areas? There were two schools.
Yes, like the high school and the Quentin Elementary.
But not Cool Spring?
No, it, it's up-to-code.
Okay, Cool Spring.
Yeah, that's actually half of the Quentin Elementary, you know, there's a hat on for that second portion of the building, it's only that 1996 portion that has...
All right, so as we evaluate the schools, there are division-wide EC, what we call ECMs, Energy Conservation Measures, also Facility Improvement Measures. So across the division, and I won't spend a lot of time on each of these, feel free to ask questions, we could go through, it could take quite a long time to go through everything that we, that we evaluated and what we're recommending at this point. Three of the solutions across the division are going to be LED lighting upgrades, interior and exterior. We are going to be adding to the building automation system, a server and front end, and then we're also doing what we call PC or computer power management, drives a lot of savings, and it's, it's one that we're going to launch across the school division. So at the high school, we must have evaluated probably what, 20, 30, 20 or 30 measures? These are the ones that we found that were the biggest needs. The two critical paths, especially the high school, are replacing the rooftop units and also the roof. The roof, I know there were some areas leaking where it started out as a, as a little bucket, it then grew to be a trash can, it then became a big industrial-sized trash can, so some significant needs out there. We have added the band roof, we were doing the rest of the sections, the school division was going to handle that, but then with, with funding, it was easier to roll it into this project, very critical there as well. And then replacing those 56 rooftop units, well past their useful life, and removing, you see that, that old duct work that's on top of the roof, not very visually pleasing at all. We're going to remove all of that. That's going to provide some future benefit that's not accounted for, giving you the opportunity to also put solar array up there, as they're doing with the rest of the school division, you could put a solar array up on that roof. So that is going to free up space there. We're also going to do what Stephen talked about, the cold plasma ionization, adding a building automation system there. That's critical to actually add that building automation system, it'll have remote access, it'll give alerts when, when there are systems that are down, so that's going to be a big component. It's going to help the teachers, right now they've got full control of the temperatures there, it's going to help, help dial that in to an appropriate level with a small bandwidth there. And then we've got, I know some of these acronyms you may not, not understand, converting the constant volume air handling is to variable flow, another great energy savings measure. We're going to be doing weatherization there to tighten up the building, and those are the main ones besides the, the division-wide measures that we're looking at.
I know you're not proposing the solar array, but wouldn't that hurt your warranty on your roof?
No, there are certain, you've got to work with the roofing company, we've had conversations, and there's, that's got to be worked through, but there's, there's way to do that that aren't going to void the warranty of the roof.
So we need to extend it five years from where we're at now, and we're currently looking into what that would entail, working with the solar company.
Question, with regard to the solar system, I have a solar system in, in my home, and I'm sure, I'm, it's probably similar to what you're using here, but what we found out in ours, first of all, I would ask you, how much, what's, how much energy is going to be produced by this?
So we are actually, it's not being done at the high school right now, and we're not actually the, the solar vendor that's actually doing the, the solar. So right now, that is a future, that can be done in the future. What we're saying is that, based on our project, it's going to free roof space and allow to get solar in, but we haven't actually, there hasn't been a proposal submitted to the school division.
My understanding, sir, is that solar, this was, they told me in mine, it degrades over a period of time, and basically... over a period of time, and basically my panels will have to be replaced within ten years because the, the exchange for the value of that, you know, as far as electricity and producing, will not be there after ten years.
That, that is not the case with, these are industrial solar panels, and the one that we're putting behind Hamilton Homes that will service Hamilton Homes of Quentin and Cool Springs, those remain the property of the Southern Sun Tribe, so they will do all maintenance, all upgrades, and all needed repairs to it. So that is out of our purview. And we just recoup the energy savings.
Although, Mr. Chairman, I'll point out that right now, we're just talking about the fact that this project would allow for a solar array to be installed. We're not actually talking about a solar array.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
We are working with that solar company. It's a separate agreement. We're working with them because it does go in hand-in-hand with what we're doing, conserving energy at this.
Thank you, sir.
Hamilton Homes, we know a lot of work's being done there now. There are, in the, the other half, there are going to be other HVAC upgrade needs in the future. Right now, in this first phase, we're just doing the, the division-wide measures, and then some of the, the building envelopes, really the lighting, the computer power management, and then the, that building envelope window film. But just as informational, there are, there are going to be other HVAC upgrade needs there. But when we talk about the financials, there's, there's more needs than what could be, what could be driven in this first phase of the project. Quentin Elementary, the big item here is the, the HVAC unit to bring in that outside air. We are going to be rightsizing that unit and replacing that heat recovery unit. You'll see in some of these schools, we're actually replacing very old transformers, and we're going to be getting those installed. And then, of course, the cold plasma ionization, we'll be putting on the water source heat pump at a Quentin Elementary as well. And it's going to get a new building automation system at a Quentin, too, right, Stephen? Cool Spring, same thing here. It's going to be the lighting, computer power management, the building envelope, and then the transformer upgrades there. Won't hit a lot on this, but we are working with a lot of school divisions. In addition to making these upgrades, we really want to, we really want to, that's a first part of these projects, but really being able to engage the students. And so we've really taken it to another level with some of the STEM curriculum. We've got this ABM Learning Labs in partnership with, with Small Lab Learning. It's had great proven results. You can see some of the increase in student learning and test scores. It's really a, a STEM active learning lab where they're actually visualizing, moving in the, in these environments. There's a couple thousand classes. We have a recent study in one that we did where their trigonometry scores alone increased twenty-one percent because it's really multisensory learning. You're not just sitting there getting lectured to. You're actually in an active environment. They have these wands and cameras, and you're, you're getting active in the space. At some point, we can, we can send out videos to see what, what it looks like. But that's something we're talking with the school division as a potential opportunity to further enhance the project. All right. So we talked about the technical solutions. Now, how does it get funded? Currently, as we look at utility costs within the school division, for the baseline years, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Moving forward, based on the implementation of the project, there would be roughly a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars in both utility and then the solar savings that are in the solar work that is being done. The bottom box to the right, you can see we've got the hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars in savings from the energy solar side. There's sixty-two thousand four hundred in operational reallocation, which is going to provide two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of total, total savings. And if you take that over the fifteen years, these are done over a fifteen-year term, done through a tax-exempt lease, and that's going to provide at a one percent escalation, three point eight million dollars over that fifteen years.
A tax-exempt lease? What is that exactly?
That's the, the financing vehicle. Most of the schools in doing these type of projects will do, take on a tax-exempt lease, municipal lease. That's the, that's the lending tool and vehicle that we use, and that's done, once again, it's a, over a fifteen-year term.
And I guess all the cost analysis are incorporating some type of present work analysis, right? We, we're looking at both capital and operational costs over that period to determine the return?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you look at both, yeah. What the capital cost, capital avoidance, you're looking at, at all of that, what the cost of money is, which I'll show, show what that looks like as well, and then what those paybacks are. And that's the, the power of the program is, is that you're really going to be able to take care of a lot of capital needs. So mechanical equipment, roofs, they're not driving a lot of energy savings, but you've got other measures that drive a lot of savings. So when you bundle them together, that allows you to get a, a much larger scope of work done. So the option one that we first, we were first evaluating, looking at the comprehensive facility improvement measures that were needed, it's not being considered at this time by the school division. It was going to be well over seven million. We were getting to that point, had some meetings with administration, county staff, and it was understood that that's, there wasn't that, there wasn't the ability to do that much work at this point. So what the selection is based on the highest priority needs from that, from the investment grade audit. The amount that it costs to do that work is four point nine two million. Under that tax-exempt lease, it's a fifteen-year lease, upfront capital payments are going to be deferred until the, the first payment will be in November of two thousand twenty. So what that allows is the project to get implemented. There's enough savings that are going to be able to repay that, that first payment in November of two thousand twenty. And then a capital contribution over and above those energy savings is not paid until the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three budget. So that's the structure there as you're doing some of these larger, you know, larger, like the roof and, and mechanical equipment. The interest rate ended up being great. Bank of America was awarded. That lease came in at three point one three percent, which is one of the better rates that I've seen in, in quite a while. So it was really favorable cost of money there on the lease. So really, yes, sir?
So the, the determination of who would hold the lease has already been made, even though the project hasn't been designed?
It has been designed. It's, it's fully designed, and so now it.
Even though it hasn't been bid? Let me rephrase it.
It has. Everything's been, been competed out, and everything is, yeah, selected. So we've got, we've got the final scope and project. Everything contractually has been, been put in place as far as each of the measures. And then that's when it goes out to financing. So it will be a, a lease. That money is essentially when it's, when they close on the, the financing, it's, it's held in an escrow account, and then it's just as regular construction, it's paid on, based on percentage completion. So that will be, be paid out over the, the term of the, of the project, being implemented.
Just to update, I'm sorry, I apologize for interrupting. The school board has not voted on it yet. They will look at it. They'll be presented tomorrow, in tomorrow's school board meeting. They will look, seek to take action on it, but as of yet, they have not. So we have not finalized the contract. We wanted to share information with you all, as well as consider additional information before we move forward.
So we haven't even finished a multimillion-dollar contract on one school project, and we're already talking about another five million dollar school project?
Yes, at no cost to the county. This is money realized through savings in our, in our operational budget, where we would apply those savings toward the upgrades that we're looking at.
We're still incurring debt through the lease. So technically, it could impact fiscal stress and other things in the long run if we were to.
It, it could, but again, that's where the guarantee comes in, and that's where I'll let Mr. Bob speak to that.
Yep. So as a part of the, the project, we have to guarantee the savings. So we are actually doing an ongoing measurement and verification annually to verify those savings. So we're in those buildings a couple times a year. We're using what's called the International Performance and Measurement and Verification Protocol. It's a very strict international standard that we have to abide by those calculations, and we have to prove those results to you on an annual basis because you're relying on those savings to repay for, for that lease. From the state perspective, it should not be considered constitutional debt because it is self-liquidating. You've got that funding stream. However, to your point, depending on some of the credit rating agencies, it can depend if they, they do evaluate it as debt. And it, it can be. But it's, it's looked at more favorably than a typical debt because you do have that, that funding stream to repay for the work.
So you're guaranteeing the savings, but if it fails?
Yes. And if we, if, if we don't meet those, those energy savings, we actually have to cut a check for the difference. That's part of the, that's part of the obligation to the contract.
Like to the leasing entity? You cut a check to who?
No, we have to cut a check to the school division.
Okay.
If we don't, if we don't meet our savings annually, and we're doing that, and we're off, we actually have to cut a check to the school division. So why now? There's, you know, we see a lot of capital volatility issues that need addressed, if you can scroll through. The contingent liability left in the buildings is going to create problems, as we're already seeing. We see now as being the, the best time for this, this lease and the debt service because it's going to hit in the future, in the very near future. So that's, that's another item. And a big component, as we've talked about the high school and the roof and the HVAC units, is there's a lower construction cost by doing this work at once. Because it, it can save about twenty percent because if you were to do, you start having HVAC units go down, you just replace the HVAC units and not do the roof, then you would actually, you'd have some costs that you'd double incur because you would have to reflash those HVAC units into the roof. And then if you were to do the roof after that, then you're going to be having to, to do the roof, and then you're going to be reflashing again. So there's a considerable cost savings by going ahead and, and knocking that out at one time.
We have a standby generator at the high school, right?
Yes.
Okay. And that has been factored into this as far as any type of draw or capacity or whatever associated with it, standby generator? I mean, it, I mean, it, that, that's not an item identified as a critical item, right?
Yeah, that, to my knowledge, that has not been factored in. That is a separate.
Yes, no. Yeah, we don't have that, Eric. You know, and we've looked at, if you're looking at, at all the, the financial institutions, you look at the Consumer Price Index, just to give you an example, too, is if, you know, kind of the, the cost of inaction is if, if you were to wait three years on some of these, and using Price Index four point two five percent inflation, you've got, what's a four point nine million dollar project, it's going to cost you five point six. And those emergency repairs and replacements can drive that cost even higher. So as we see, there's, there's a very compelling message on being able to, to do all of that at, at one time. And it still doesn't address everything. You know, you've got, you've got other needs that are going to be coming up as well. But it really, really takes a, really helps considerably. You know, and as we see it, it's a great vehicle to allow you to afford to get all this work done now. It's really addressing core needs, not once, not, not planning for the future. It's really taking care of what do you need right now. And so it's a great vehicle to allow you to do that. And we already hit on, on some of this, on the ongoing guarantee. We are using the international protocol. We will be bringing those reports back annually. We'll be in the buildings a few times a year. And the new control systems, we're going to be able to provide ongoing monitoring and trending with that new building automation system. So it's not going to be just our calculus. You're also going to be able to track it with the building automation system to look at what those savings are moving forward. And then staff will be trained on, on new technologies, any type of new technologies, or will be training provided.
And we install our own electric heaters to make sure that we are tracking the guarantee. So intended deviation from our intended or guarantee savings, it sends us a load, and we kind of start looking into what's going on, why is the building consuming more energy than supposed to? So all that's built into that mandatory part of this project, which is the guarantee savings part.
Kind of hot water heaters are proposed. Is there anything associated with the project that incorporates hot water heaters?
It wasn't one of the top critical items in this phase, unless we found that lack of outside air at high school and half the elementary was kind of to priority over all the other capital projects we're looking at.
Yeah, and we are doing some, not on the hot water side, we are doing some water conservation upgrades at the high school. There was a, an elevated spend at the high school, so we are able to drive some water conservation measures and make upgrades there.
Heating of the hot water could be done through the solar panels, or is that not going to be tied to it?
No, I don't believe that's their intention. They're just electric, strictly for electric panel savings.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and we've done that, what we call the solar evacuated, domestic hot water for kitchens and all that. And, and it's a balance on that return on investment.
Exactly.
I mean, a lot of times, it's a longer, a longer payback. So it doesn't, a lot of the renewable technologies are, are great. This, the solar works in this instance with, with that PPA, and then it's a thirty-year. But on some, it just is, is core, some of the other renewables that just longer payback.
Three or four buildings are on well water. So like the high school, going on in Manhattan City. And we actually, by doing water conservation, you're going to decrease that amount of water you need to actually heat up. So we are affecting it. It's all electric, we're now heating it down there. So in another phase, you might want to change the propane, but right now, by lowering the flow of fixtures, we are actually reducing the amount of heat we need.
I know they have your, your inline hot water heaters also with the piping, so, as opposed to thermal heat pumps and whatnot. So, okay.
So in closing, obviously, the, the biggest benefit is that we know it's about the students. So really being able to, to provide that improved indoor air quality, lighting levels, that physical learning environment. So every student across the school division benefits. And it allows you to leverage the savings to get more work done than what you would normally be able to do. So it helps improve the cash flow. And another benefit, which I know for the school division is going to be that this is a firm fixed price. Since we are guaranteeing, it's really a three-phase guarantee. So there are no change orders from us. We have to abide by the price that's in the contract. If the school division wants anything else done above and beyond that, then, then that would be different. But it is firm fixed price. We're guaranteeing the performance of the systems and then the long-term functionality. So it's really a three-phase guarantee. It, it's going to help provide that fiscal stewardship and provide a long-term strategic asset management plan, too. So not only for this project, but for future planning. And as we said a couple times, the results are, results are guaranteed. And then this just shows the timeline of the, the work we've done to, to this point.
Any idea on the length of work?
Yep. So typically, a project of this size would be about a twelve-month, about twelve months altogether to, to final close. A lot of the work would be done over the summer, the majority. So for instance, if we move, move forward to be able to get summer construction, that's kind of the time-critical moment, is we can get the, the roofing and the HVAC done all the summer at the high school, which is critical. So that's a, that's one. So that, that really provides a majority of that work being done over the summer. But by the time you, you know, do all the rest of the controls and some of the other upgrades, at most, it would be ten to twelve months.
In this case, right now, we're looking at December, January, critical path. Assuming others, you know, to not work out, let's say a lot of roofing and HVAC work on the roof, we're looking at twelve, fourteen, sixteen months critical back.
Any other questions?
I'm good. Thank you.
All right. So we've got a fifteen-year term here. As far as the projected useful life of the roof, of the mechanical equipment, what, what type of stuff are we going to be using?
Right. So, so the overall equipment life is going to exceed that fifteen years. State legislation allows you to go twenty years. We never advocate twenty years on these programs because we want to make sure that by the time that you are paying off the lease, that you still have useful life left. So for instance, roof, at this point, it's got a twenty-year warranty on it. You know, we're looking at, for the potential, the solar adding another five years to it. The mechanical equipment, most of that is going to be in the fifteen to twenty-year range, right? The transformers are thirty-year. So, so you're looking at a, a combined project where it's, it's going to exceed the, the life of the lease.
Okay. And as far as the, the measurables related to the guarantee, are those ever, do those numbers come strictly from y'all? Are they ever independently reviewed or verified by either the school or, or through an independent auditor that, that you guys bring in?
Yeah, it can be. I mean, in most cases, since we're using that International Performance and Measurement and Verification Protocol, entities aren't choosing to pay an extra fee to have that done because we're having to follow. to have that done because we're having to follow those standards. But there are other people within the state too that can give you some guidance as well, so.
How long have you been in business?
Great question. The company's been in business since 1909, so going on 110 years. We are one of the largest integrated facility solutions providers in the country. And really, all the divisions are created around driving efficiencies and within, really renovating, operating, and maintaining facilities is our core expertise.
And so then, you know, really, on this end, there's no action on our part, is there? They've got their revenue stream identified, and they're pressing forward with it, okay?
But I'm going to remember the guarantee.
All right, absolutely.
As we are.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is Item 10B, Resolution 19-29 Budget Amendment to the King William Social Services FY 2019 Budget Amendment.
Resolution 19-29 speaks about a local match for pass-through funding for the agency. Every year, we use pass-through funding, which is extra money that the state and the feds, it's actually the federal government, will pass down to us with a 66% match. And we use it throughout the year. And at the end of the year, sometimes we are short of the local funds to match it, to pull it down to finish the year. And this hasn't happened in a while, but this year it did. So we're asking for the local match for those pass-through funds. A lot of local agencies wait until the very end of the year to use pass-through, and then they need a lot of local match, whereas we try to use it throughout the year towards, so the end of the year, we don't have as much.
Can you give the board some ideas of what the funds are used for?
Yes. Well, they're used for all of our programs. They're used for the assistance programs that we have, for the purchase services for clients, for the administration costs, administrative costs. And a lot of things, well, I can't say a lot, but we do have a lot of local-only payments that we make that we cannot get, match from the state for, such as our board member pay. Some of our attorney fees have gone up. We've had a lot of cases come in from the courts, and we've had to do a lot of advertisement, right, advertisement for those notices for custody and that type of situation that we weren't expecting when the budget went through last year. There's just been a lot of extra expense because of extra work that we're doing.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion that we accept and go forward with the Resolution 1929 as presented to us?
It is 29.
Does it say 1929 here?
Yeah, it is on the paper, but it's 28. 29.
29, okay.
Second.
The motion's been made.
And second. Further discussion, Tori.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Earhart? Mr. Earhart?
Yeah, I heard you. But my agenda, Item 10B, is 1928 attached to it, but this is mistaken, right, what you're saying?
That's the one you're using, but it should be 29.
And the introduction, the administrator's insert in front of it hasn't numbered correctly. It's just the, yeah.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Next item is Resolution 19-30 Budget Amendment to King William County Comprehensive Services Act and Porter.
Good evening. CSA is requesting approval for supplemental funding in fiscal year 19. The original appropriate budget for Fund 220 totaled $1,056,000. Of this, the local funding consisted of $389,463. And the state funding consisted of $646,537. And charges for services consisted of $20,000. This request for supplemental funding impacts both state and local portions of the funding stream. The state supplemental funding would increase the budget by $128,189. And the local supplemental funding would increase by $65,678. The total new budget request would total $1,249,867. I have requested the state supplemental allocation, and I think you have that request in your packet. And that has been approved by the state.
Mr. Chairman, let me make the motion that we accept the resolution, I believe it's 1930, correct? As it is, and pass this motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for discussion, Tori.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Item 10D, Resolution 19-31, Marl Hill and West Liberty Farms Street Acceptance, Ron Eter.
Good evening.
The request being made to the Board of Supervisors of King William County is to approve the addition of a new subdivision streets to the state's secondary system of highways. This action is pursuant to Code of Virginia 232-705, Continuance of Power of County Authorities Alternative Procedure. The roads listed have been identified to be added to the secondary system of state highways pursuant to the statutory provisions or provisions cited. In addition, is hereby requested the right-of-way for which, including additional easements for cuts, fills, and drainage as required, is hereby guaranteed. The roads include Moncun Court, Birmingham Circle, Sherwood Court, and West Liberty Farms Drive. And staff recommends approval of Resolution 19-31, and the attachments are in your packet.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
Some move, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Further discussion, Tori.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Item E, Conveyance of Right-of-Way for the Construction of Route 30 State Project 0030050-585R201, Ron Eter, whatever that means.
Resolution 1932 is for VDOT's request for acquisition right-of-way for the state project you just mentioned. The Virginia Department of Transportation has determined that 900 square foot of permanent drainage easement and 466 square feet of temporary construction easement for slope is required for the Route 30-360 construction project. Both easements are located at the northern portion of the property along the frontage with Route 30. That's Page 2 of Attachment B. VDOT is recommending payment for the use of the temporary easement, as well as payment for the permanent easement for drainage purposes. VDOT has identified Route 30 and Highway 360 intersection as a viable smart-scale project. The project is currently under development and is expected to be awarded in the fall of 2020. The project will improve the intersection function by providing dedicated right, left, and through movement for eastbound Route 30 and construction curb, gutter, and sidewalks along south side of Route 30. Consideration options: approve the acquisition of the temporary and permanent easement and authorize the county administrator to sign appropriate documents to convey. Staff does recommend approval of Resolution 19-32.
Any questions?
Give me another minute here. Where exactly is this? Can you better describe?
You know where the water tower is?
Yeah.
Right in front of it, along Route 30. Should one of the attachments in there, it's just a small section, is between the water tower and Route 30?
So, help me, clarification. So you said right in front of the water tower on right Route 30. So that would put it right near that entrance to the, well, what was it, the old Burger King property?
Yeah, you're in that area.
But the other side of the road.
Yeah, you're on opposite side of the road from the Burger.
Thank you.
You see the diagram with the green and red?
That would be helpful.
I don't think there are any colors.
Yes, you do not see any.
No, I'm seeing, it's all shades of gray.
This one's been colored too, so I can have it much. But there's the water tower here.
Mm-hmm.
There's one there, and there's two sections right here.
So this is a permanent transfer?
Part of it's permanent, and one of them is a temporary easement.
And the temporary is because of the proposed intersection improvement?
Right, they need that for some of their construction work.
Sure. Sure, I understand, sir. Thank you.
And how do they base the assessed value?
They actually did appraisal of surrounding properties, did a series of comps, which I believe is in the package, looking at other properties in other counties that are similar. And then they came up with their numbers that way.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve Resolution 19-32.
Second.
Any further discussion? Tori. Move, okay. Tori.
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Next item we have is 11A Fire and EMS Call Statistics. What did I miss?
You're on the original agenda. The revised agenda has 10N.
All right. Item F, Resolution 19-33 Appropriating Funds to VPPSA away a five-year period for support of the construction of vehicles maintenance building.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members, Mr. Tazanari, Mr. Schleck. For those that don't know who VIPSa is, we're a regional solid waste authority. We've been providing services here since 1993. Specifically up here, we have the five communities that we have 16 locations, and we have the convenience centers up here. I was, on my way up here, I was running through my head, because I've been here for 23 years, working for VIPSa, trying to remember some of the things that we've done just here in King William County. If you look outside, you'll see a 40 cubic yard container that you guys are using for some cleanup. And then that's one of the containers that we provided. We did a cleanup at the Mount Olive Cohoke, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that program, where we rolled out about 40 dumpsters full of material from that cleanup. We've always participated in the powwows. We've always put containers up there. We've provided several thousand cubic yards of mulch that we make at our compost facility in Yorktown up to the park. We had some erosion issues that we assisted with. We also put mulch at the schools and also at the administrative buildings. We've done numerous cleanups. There was a tornado, touchdown behind Jim Hall's store back there. We ran eight open tops full of brush and debris from there. What we're looking to do is we've been operating at our Middlesex location where we have an old landfill, and we have a building that we've been doing our maintenance out of. Unfortunately, the building is so small that no trucks can fit inside. And our chief mechanic, old Marine gunny sergeant, has been doing everything outside. What we're trying to do is we're trying to build a building, and we also have our drivers, we have two dispatchers, two supervisors, working out of a trailer that's 1995, it's 24 years old, one bathroom. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to put together a building that has a maintenance facility and a building big enough for some training and a couple of bathrooms for his and her. What we've got is we've got some funding. In 2007, we started this project, but then 2008 hit, the economy went terrible. But we've been appropriating some funds into that fund balance. We have sufficient funds in some equipment reserves. What we're looking to do is have you approve the use of $26,120, starting in FY '21, that you would pay back through additional funding. But the rest of the money, all the money that we're asking for is the rest of what we have, which is $2 million, we're going to self-fund so there's no interest on it. This $26,120 that we're requesting is to be paid back over that five-year period to replace the funds that we're going to be using with fund money that we currently have. I know everybody has that in there, so if there's any additional questions or...
Where's the building going?
It's actually in King and Queen, the Bohemian Industrial Park. It's right across from VDOT. It's a five-acre site where we'll be fixing our trucks, and it's nice to be working indoors.
Have the other jurisdictions approved funding?
We're in the process of, the board, the Oversight Committee meeting, the Oversight Committee has approved it. The VIPSa board has approved it pending final approval from each board. King and Queen, we already met with them, they've approved it. Year number two, we're working our way through.
As long as the other jurisdictions proceed with it, I mean, I guess if we can make it kind of understood, that it's continued upon them approving it, I make a motion we adopt Resolution 1933.
Second.
It's in here already.
Okay.
The second date.
Just wanted to make sure.
Mike, it's already been seconded, sir.
I think so.
It has, yes.
Okay, good. Are the other counties being, the other participants, are they being asked to contribute equal amounts of money to this?
Yes, sir. It's all in the, it's all in the package there.
I know, I read that.
Oh, okay. Absolutely. The difference is what available fund balances that each one has. But everybody starts off with $418,000.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Tori.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
No.
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Unless we have a second amendment agenda, we'll be at Item 11A Fire and EMS Call Statistics for April, I think, in chief back.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. You can see our EMS billing revenues continue, we continue to collect every month with decent amounts of money. The average response times out of... Our average response times were six and a half minutes. And... I apologize. It's been a rough day. It's been a rough couple of days. With Station 2, six and a half minutes. With Station Two, six and a half minutes, and nine and a half minutes is what, again, I apologize, you can just ask me any questions, I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask?
Absolutely.
Your staffing and such, was, just, just a quick question, I'm with staffing, and you, I, you already answered it for me, I believe when we had a short discussion this, prior to the meeting, when we're looking at the staff units, we still have not, as a county, taken on a total, or the property transfer and equipment transfer, Station One, has not transferred to the county yet, correct?
No, sir, it has not been transferred yet, but that, I would defer to Mr. Stuck and Mr. Tass and Harry on where that we are in that process.
So that's into my follow-up question, then, when we're looking at their response time, this is the Station One that we all know and love, sponsored, their, their response time, not under the different administration?
This is the county running out of Station One, the seven point four five minutes is the county running out of Station One.
Okay, thank you.
And Station Four collectively.
That, that's where I was going, thank you.
All right, so the, the six and a half minute response time, I got that out of dispatch, which does conflict with number two's data, they had nine and a half minutes with their response time, so with the difference in staffing...
Who is they?
Oh, Mangahick, I'm sorry, so, number two, they had six and a half minutes, nine and a half minutes.
I'm sorry, which is the nine and a half minutes?
So...
Well, actually, if I understand correctly, Mangahick was showing a longer response time than our tracking was, correct? Yeah?
I would like to thank Station Two for the members loading their stuff, personnel info, I am responding. You have no idea how comforting it is to see the amount of people staffed throughout the county, based on, based on proper staffing in the county. It's also a relief for our volunteers, seeing other areas staffed. It all, I, I would like to say it makes a decision-making very easy for me on large incidents, knowing that we have units available and reduces the need for mutual aid. Once I, I open up, I am responding, I see all these people marked up, I don't have to ask for mutual aid right off the bat, because when we're going on house fires of large incidents, my first initial response when I'm marking around to a call has been to ask for Carolina or Hannah to help. With them being marked up, it makes my decisions very easy, I knew somebody's coming to us, so I don't have to mark up mutual aid as much as I've been marking them up.
The question of staffed time and that being inconsistent with what was coming out of dispatch, is that, are, are you on board with the concept of that and, and, and working with the sheriff to do this?
Absolutely, I don't, I don't know if you know me very well, and I don't like to be wrong, so I want to make sure that we get this right, and doubt, for, even for down the road, I want to make sure that everything is up and up in the way it's supposed to be, so I plan on meeting with the sheriff and some of their dispatchers to try to figure out how to get it fixed.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, so, I'm so confused, the information that's presented here tonight is correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we have had issues in the past where supposedly the, the numbers have been, there's been a discrepancy between this and Station Two?
Tonight, there has been, yes, sir.
Okay, so...
Both for their benefit and against their benefit.
All right, so... If, and this doesn't go back where, where I'm trying to understand, in terms of whether the, the numbers may or may not actually be correct, if you, there's a handout right on the table there for you, that all the board members have, these are the January and February call statistics?
Yes, sir.
You might want to take a look at it. If I, if I understand it correctly, there was a total of twenty-three responses for Station Six in January?
Eight plus fifteen, yes, sir, that's twenty-three.
And this is Matipanai, right?
Yes, sir.
And then in February, there would have been thirty, next page.
That's not, that's not, no.
I see February is one.
You've got EMS answer, and then you have no response EMS, so that's eight responses.
Okay, eight. Okay, eight, and then one...
You're not adding those two numbers together to get to the total number of calls that responded to.
One in February.
One in February is what I've got.
Okay. So then, looking at that compared to what King and Queen actually has officially on record for Matipanai, they were saying there was three in January and two in February, so how do we have a discrepancy of eight in January when they're saying three?
That's King and Queen.
Right, different county.
Yeah.
I understand that.
Then, hold on, what?
Okay, never...
I, I'm serious, Bob, but...
I'm trying to understand, I'm trying to understand how all this, all this fits together, so, so they, they, they went into King and Queen, we, we're not tracking King and Queen, that's not reflected on here at all. Okay, okay, all right, never mind, I just want to make sure I understood all this, okay, that's good, thank you.
So again, when he, where he has, I read the email, you know, on the handout when he gave it to me, where he has the, the number of calls that he has them answering in King William, he says that they don't, basically, they don't know when they go into King William unless they tell him.
Right.
And if they don't tell him, then it's not recorded anywhere, so, yeah, but th- those numbers there are, are, what Greg sent you, are just for King and Queen dispatches, and we don't, we don't track them.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, I don't, I don't have King and Queen's numbers in front of me, I don't think.
All right, thank you.
I think it's, oh. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think so.
That is it, thank you, sorry, I apologize for the beginning.
All right. The next item I have is the Board of Supervisors' comments.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
And I, I was, I guess, remiss in not mentioning earlier, if, if there's an opportunity to add an item under, for a bit of a discussion underneath administration here, reference to Raymond Carter's email to us, to all the board members? Dealing with tax for vehicles for the veterans?
I did not receive that email.
I, I read it, but I don't have it with me.
Do you have it to pass out?
I mean, I think you got a response from Sally that, that is all...
It was sent to all the board members, yes.
We didn't get it.
And you got it, but I don't have it.
Day seventeen?
Dave didn't get it, I didn't get it, Travis didn't get it, did you have a copy? We get it, we read it.
Okay, it's went to...
But didn't Sally identify that you do that?
We don't have, we, we don't have, we don't have a program that addresses veterans for tax relief on their vehicles, only on property.
I have to go back and read that one again, then, how about, can you put it on a work session, Mr. Tass and Eric, because I, I don't see us discussing this with no more information, that's not the way I read it.
Okay, that's fine, I'll make, I'll, I'll read it, I'll read it under my...
I don't have it, so if you go for that, please.
That's fine. And you're up.
Okay. All right, so, appreciate the folks from Mangahick coming out and things hopefully coming together here, we had a meeting a week ago, about a dozen items were discussed, one of them dealing with the dispatch versus handwritten records, how that's preserved, how to make that better, make it, eliminate any concerns with how it's done, glad that that meeting has a curve with, with the sheriff, another item on it, had to deal with image trend and HIPAA, sounds like that hopefully also is moving forward, and those issues aren't going to continue to, to manifest themselves. What I was going to make reference there, but hopefully in the future, again, this was a May seventeenth email, three twenty-five PM, sent to Dee Hanson, S. Greenwood, T. Moskowski, V. Hodges, all with the correct domain, deals with Mr. Carter as a disabled veteran, and he was seeking, hoping the county could do something regarding Disabled Veteran Personal or Property Tax Relief Act. Again, I don't know what happened, I, I know I've had issues sometimes, things not getting through or going through, but myself and Mr. Hodges, I wrote to Sally, she says the county offers real estate tax relief for disabled veterans, the county may, by local ordinance, exempt the vehicle from, for a veteran, so we don't currently have that for our veterans, so that's something I would like us to consider in the future, and if, you know, if you don't, y'all don't get that email, let Thor I know, because I know we both have gotten it, so...
Discuss that next part.
Yeah, that's all...
I think she's already put it down.
That's all I, that's all I have for this evening, I appreciate everybody coming out, and hopefully things will be moving forward together.
This has been a very nice turnout, you folks taking the time out of your day and out of your week to be here this evening, and I think this is one of the largest groups that we've had in quite some time. Thank you again for your consideration of what's going on in the county and your participation, it's greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Greenwood?
Want to thank everybody for coming also, and also remember this weekend is Memorial Day, so be safe out there, road construction has been stopped for the holiday weekend, so the traveling should be a little easier, just everybody be safe out there, thanks everybody for coming.
All right, yeah, thanks for coming, of course Memorial Day, as Mr. Greenwood pointed out, I'll throw in, the powwow is going on this weekend, a great annual event here in the county, so if you're able to attend that, I would encourage you to do so, otherwise, please have a safe, happy weekend, whatever your plans are, and we hope to see you back here again.
And thank everyone for coming out, I think it was the largest crowd I've seen from West Point in a while up here, it's, it's nice recognition, Matt, for the family, they have endured a lot, but again, I think each and every one of you, and at this time, I will make a motion to go in closed session in accordance with Section two point two dash thirty-seven-eleven A-one, Code of Virginia, I move that the Board of Supervisors convene in closed session to consider a personnel matter involving the appointment of the county attorney.
Second. Tori.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Moskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
All right, folks, hopefully we'll be back shortly, and if you can't wait, we appreciate you coming.